I'll call this regular workshop meeting of Jacksonville City Council order. Council, you have before you copy the proposed agenda for tonight's meeting. It's time to entertain motion to adopt your proposed agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second and further discussion. Here now on favor, second five percent, aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Next, we have an adoption of the minutes and there's eight consent items. Minutes are from October 18th, 2022, regular meeting.
Let me accept it to the minutes and consent items.
Second.
Discussion here now on all favor, second five percent, aye?
Aye.
All opposed. First item tonight is the auditor's report on the city's annual comprehensive financial report for FY 2022.
Hey, boy. All right. My name is Leanne Vagasala. I work for Malden's and Jenkins. I'm a director there and this is our first year as your auditors, as your external auditor, so I'm happy to meet everybody. I actually was your auditor a couple of years ago, too, at a different firm, but this is the first year Malden's and Jenkins has worked on your audit. So what I wanted to go through with you tonight is I want to give you an idea of who your engagement team is, kind of get familiar with some of the names of people that are working on your engagement, kind of give you understanding of who Malden's and Jenkins is. Also want to go through your audit opinions that you have and then kind of give you some idea of the scope of our audit, kind of talk a little bit about fund balance, a little bit about our single audits, and then go through some required communications with you. And anytime you have questions, please let me know. So this slide is an overview of who Malden's and Jenkins is. We are a mid-sized accounting firm. We actually have 14 offices. We just opened up our 14th office in Raleigh, North Carolina, so we are now local in the state of North Carolina. I am based out of the Raleigh, North Carolina office and Malden's and Jenkins is putting a really big emphasis in North Carolina. We actually just doubled our practice this year in the North Carolina office, but in total, we have over 650 governments across the five states that we're in and our government practice is about a third of our business. Your engagement team leaders were Tim Loinz. He was your engagement partner. He's the one that ultimately signed your audit opinions. He is the partner in charge of our South Carolina and our North Carolina office. And then you also had a quality review partner. This is a partner that is not involved in the audit at all while audits being completed, but he comes in and does an independent review of everything that's done. In your first year audit, he literally reviews everything. So you had another eyes on your audit. And then I served as your engagement director and I had seniors and staff that worked with me as well. So the first opinion that you received is the beginning of your financial statements is the opinion over the financial statements. We consider internal control structures when we are working on that opinion, but our actual opinion does not provide an opinion on the effectiveness of your internal controls. Our audit was performed in accordance with the generally accepted accounting principles of the United States of America and government auditing standards. Our purpose is to provide reasonable assurance, but not absolute assurance, that your financial statements are free from material misstatement. And overall, just so that we were all on the same page, your management team, they prepared the financial statements and they are ultimately ones responsible for the financial statements. Your audit opinion that you did receive was an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion. It's the highest level assurance that we can provide you as auditors. And just to make sure we're all on the same page, our opinion of the city in totality does not extend beyond the financial statements that you have. So there is a disclosure later in here that kind of just lets you know that if you ever do provide your financial statements to someone, you need to provide the opinion to, but don't provide the opinion and not the financial statements. We also wanted you to know, just for clarity, that we do audit and give a separate opinion for the Jacksonville Tourism Development Authority, who also received an unmodified This is a little slide that gives you an idea. We didn't want to go through all your financial information for this past year. Did want to highlight our net position to you. This is the slide that kind of shows the strength of the city of Jacksonville. From a comparison to prior year, you increased your net position $16 million. There's a couple of numbers up here just to give you an idea. Net investment and capital assets, a calculation, but it basically is the asset you have minus debt for the most part. And then you have some restricted requirements. The first one is a restricted state statute requirement. That is a calculation that we perform. And then your unrestricted fund, net position for the year did increase $14.4 million. The next opinions that we gave, you got two more opinions. The first one is opinion over government auditing standards. A lot of people call it a yellow book opinion. That is an opinion where we do test the city's internal controls and compliance with laws and regulations and you received an unmodified opinion for that one. And then because of your federal and state grant funding, we also had to perform what's called a single audit and you got, you got two opinions for that. You got one opinion of your federal program compliance and you got one opinion of your state, state funding compliance. We tested two programs in total, one federal, one state. Both of those opinions that you received was an unmodified opinion. We did not identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in either of the programs that we tested. So altogether, you received four audit opinions. They were all clean, no issues noted. But as part of being a first year audit, we do recommend process improvements throughout, just, you know, things that we see. You know, we give those to management, but overall, it was a very clean audit. The next couple of slides I have do go over the required communication. These are things that we have to inform you of. The first is significant audit accounting policies. Those are listed in the notes to your financial statements. We reviewed those accounting policies and note that they are in accordance with government auditing standards. In the current year, your, the city did implement the, a new standard related to leases and they will also be implementing another one next year, which we'll go over later. But there wasn't any accounting policies that we determined were controversial or emerging issues. So overall, we agreed with accounting policies that the city has. Also in your financial statements, it's important to note that there are estimates in there. Some of those are actuarially determined, like you're pensioned in your OPAB. And those are also disclosed in your footnotes. From a relationship standpoint, we did receive full cooperation from city's management and staff. There were no disagreements with accounting issues or any financial matters throughout the audit. As part of the audit, management does have to give us what's called a management representation letter. We have to have that in order to issue, so we did receive that. We're not aware of the city consulting with any other accountants. It's a funny disclosure that we have to tell you. And then also, there was no significant issues discussed with management that we think that you should be aware of. And I'm happy to report that the books and records that we received at the beginning of our audit are what you see in your financial statements. There were no unrecorded or past audit adjustments as part of our procedures. The disclosures that you have in this 300-page document are very important and they're an integral part of the financial statements. As part of our testing, we do make sure that disclosures agree to our work papers, what we actually tested. They're neutral, they're consistent, and that they're, the clarity is good in those disclosures. The benefit of being a North Carolina government is you receive an example of the footnote disclosures from the local government commission. So we kind of review that and to make sure every year that the city's making the changes that they need to make. And then also just wanted to make, make you aware that Malden's and Jenkins and all partners and management are independent of the city of Jacksonville as well as the TDA. And this is just a slide that kind of gives you an idea of some of the offerings Malden's and Jenkins has. We can help with different things like strategy, operating effectiveness, transformation and performance measures, some like special projects. Let's just say the city wanted to redo all their policies. They wanted to rewrite their internal controls or something like that. We could do a separate project to help in kind of doing some assessments of that or help with any ERP implementations. This next slide does go through a couple of the standards that are coming out here. The biggest one on this is related to subscription-based information technology arrangements. That is effective for this coming up year and we'll be working with the city to make sure that that is properly implemented in their fiscal year 2023 financials. There's also a couple of other pronouncements that are coming up in the next couple of years and as information comes out about those technical topics and examples, we'll be sharing those with the city management. And then also provide you some understanding of some of the projects that are coming up. There is a reexamination of the financial reporting model. Basically, the way that we do the financials could be changing. There is some discussion about revenue and expense recognition coming out. And then also some discussion about a project related going, to going concern uncertainties and financial stress. The partner that I mentioned previously that is your partner in charge, his name is Tim Loinz, he's actually on the Gatsby Technical Task Force for this going concern project that the Gatsby has going on right now. So he's very technical and soon as we learn, you know, what's going on with that, we'll share that with the city. And this is one of the last slides we have, just as a benefit for those that are clients of Malden's and Jenkins. We do offer a lot of continuing education for those that need CPE credit that work for the city of Jacksonville. They're, they can go on to any Malden's and Jenkins training to get that extra CPE that's And that's all I have. If anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions? You got it done in time. Thank you. Thank you for bringing us that good, good report. Thank you.
Man, I'll tell you, this was Sabrina's first audit as, under her direction and so a clean audit is fantastic. So good job for her. And to her team, because the process is great and thanks for the, for the good work and getting this taken care of. I tell people, this is one of the most exciting meetings of the year when our audit is delivered because it shows our, our accountability, it shows our transparency, and these documents are readily available for any citizen that wants to come and check it out. They can have this great hard copy right here or they can check online and we'll have it documented online. And so that shows the integrity of our organization and the, the good work of the council and the staff. So I think it's a great opportunity to have an audit. Once a year is enough, but it'll be online there. Thank you very much.
And the local government commission did accept your audit already. They accepted it yesterday with no changes, so that's always happy. Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor? We need to take action to accept your audit?
Yes, sir.
Would we accept the audit as presented?
Second.
The motion is second and just further discussion. All is in favor, second five percent, aye? All opposed. Next is item number 10. This is 2022 COPS hiring grant award acceptance. Chief Yanero and Deputy Chief Weaver here to present. Aye. Mayor and council, we appreciate the opportunity to talk about the 2022 COPS grant. And since Deputy Chief Weaver has done most of the work, I'm going to let her do the presentation and I'll chime in every so often.
Mayor and council, thank you for your time tonight. I will defer that work because Deputy Chief Ronnie Dorn actually wrote this grant. I assisted and provided some, some information documentation, but it was actually him that wrote the grant. So we are going to present to you about the grant. At the end, we'll talk about the actual cost of the grant and what the grant requirements are, but of course, we want to lead with a little bit of our, what the issues are and what are some of the things that we've seen over the last five-plus years. Obviously, one city is community engagement. That is the philosophy that the council adopted several years ago and these are some of examples of things that we've done over the last several years for, for that. And talking about community policing, that is our philosophy. We are committed to that. Community policing is about solving the problems before their problems and solving the problems with the community. It's not us going into the community and solving the problems that we think are their problems. It's talking with the community and discovering what they think their problems are and helping to either break down perceptions or address what their concerns are. This is just an idea of what it's looked like over the last 10 years on our calls for service. We break it up into a couple of different categories. Our citizen-initiated calls for service are those that a citizen calls 911 or calls the admin line and asks for an officer to come out. The self-initiated, there's a little bit of overlap here because if an officer pulls up on a scene of something like a crash, it goes in our system as self-initiated, but realistically, that should be a citizen-initiated call. So there's a little bit of overlap we see in some of these numbers, but this is traffic stops, this is field interviews, this is officers getting out of their cars and engaging with the community and engaging with people in the public. And then administrative, you see, that's risen over the years. That is court, that is training, necessary trainings that we have for de-escalation, for use of force training, mandatory training required by the state for certifications. All of that gets wrapped into administrative time. And it's important to look at each of those as obligated time for the officers because these are, these are necessary. They're, they're things that the officers have to do. The officer has to go to court, the officer has to write a report, and when they're doing those things, they're not answering calls for service. And to give you kind of an overview over the last five years, this is how the change has occurred. There has been a 12% increase in the citizen-initiated calls for service over the last five years and just from '20 to '21, there's a 9% increase. But we wanted to kind of give you an overall view of how things have increased and how our time's being used.
I think citizen-initiated calls are probably the thing that we look at really the most because that's the demand for services that, that our community asks for. And so when we see that go up, those are things that administratively, we can move things around, we can try to, try to ease those off, the training requirements and things like that, but we can't do that with citizen-initiated calls. And in the, the call volume, if you go back to that graph, you can see that it's generally increased over the last several years. And we have a slide that we talk about. The ICP recommends a 60-40 split and that includes 60% of the time that an officer's is obligated for, for services and training and everything else, 40% of unobligated time. And if we go back to that community policing philosophy and giving officers an opportunity to engage the community, that becomes extremely important to us.
One of the other increases with citizen-initiated calls for service is the time spent on that, those calls for service. Citizens need and require additional time to make sure that we've received the information, we know what the problem is, and that we're addressing it appropriately. In the last year, that we've gone from about an hour per call for service to an hour, almost an hour and a half on one call for service. That's the average.
And there's a lot of reasons for that, a lot of reasons in our philosophy. The, the de-escalation portion obviously takes a lot more time. So officers have to spend more time in the, on those, those types of calls. We talk about mental health calls and the opioid calls that we go on, using the LEAD program, which is law enforcement assisted diversion. All those things increase the amount of time that we're spending on, on those calls for service. And so that's, that's eating into our demand, our, the demand for the officer's service. It's also eaten into our opportunities to engage the community in positive activities from a community policing standpoint.
So Chief spoke about us adjusting kind of how we manage things as we're seeing those calls for service go up. One of the things that we had to do in the last two years is remove one of our specialized units. This was our criminal intelligence unit. This was a uniformed unit that kind of dealt with those problem areas and problem issues going on in the community that really, you see a huge crime reduction when those issues are addressed proactively versus reactively. And since that unit was removed in, during 2020, so we've used 2019 numbers when they were in fact, and before COVID, and the 2025 current past year, you can see how these key areas have increased. And these are some of the areas that we look at when we're looking at where do we need to put personnel and where do we need to manage things. So because the crimes were increasing, we removed them from that because we needed them actually answering calls for service.
And I'd add, I appreciate the council this last summer, looking at our salaries and working with our salaries. Since then, we've seen a drop in the exodus of officers from the department. So what you did is, is we certainly appreciate that it's been very beneficial for us to retain the officers that we have.
So another one of the metrics that we look at is traffic crashes and seeing, you know, the proactive policing, traffic enforcement. As it drops, we start seeing issues arise and you can see from 2018 to present, our traffic crash fatalities have more than 90% increased. In 2018, we had zero. This year, we're at 12 and it's not, the year's not even over.
And some of that is because, because of the loss of personnel over the last several years during COVID and with the George Floyd incident, we lost a tremendous amount of officers. And that decreases our ability to, to actually do traffic enforcement, coupled with the opioid issue and the mental health issues that we're dealing with in the community. I think, I think part of that challenge is how do we get officers back to doing traffic enforcement? Although we didn't disband our traffic unit, it's, it has several officers down at this particular time because we need those folks on patrol.
And it's important to remember that traffic enforcement is not about writing citations to everybody. Traffic enforcement is about gaining voluntary compliance with the motor vehicle laws. It's about making people recognize their own behaviors and slowing down and wearing seatbelts so that they're not involved in high-speed crashes with seatbelts that causes fatalities. Obviously, the goal is to the safety of the motor vehicle public. Some of the other metrics that we look at, when we're talking about personnel and where we need them and what we're looking at is our aggravated assaults, shootings, stabbings, domestic violence calls, overdoses. We've talked in here several times about the COSAP grant and how we've seen a rise in overdoses. And then increase in commercial robberies. These are, these are the areas that are generally considered more violent and would really affect the, the quality of life for our citizens and where we tend to focus our efforts on.
Just over a period of how long? This is three-year period. From 2019 to the present. And some of that we can attribute to, to the climate in, in the country. I mean, there's been an uptick in violent crime across the country, but these are the things that keep me up at night because these are the things I really look at on a month-to-month basis to see if, if, if our strategies are working. If our strategies, if we start to see increases in these areas, then we, we need to readjust and we need to do other different things. The challenge that we've had is the increased call volume and the fact that we were down almost 24 officers. In fact, we have 24 officers in training right now and that doesn't include the, the four openings that we have. So I think part of our challenge is looking at these and making sure that, that we either see reductions or they don't go up because those are the real indicators of, of quality of life issues and, and violence in our community.
And some of the other most common ones that take the most time and things that we address in 2021 are crisis calls. So mental health calls, these are family members calling because they have a, a family member in crisis or they need their, they've gotten a text message and there's an issue and they need their family member checked on. We do use other resources to try to mitigate the officers being there because obviously this is a mental health problem and not a police problem, but we're the first responders. We're the ones that have the training for the, the de-escalation and the crisis intervention to get it stabilized so that the mental health professionals can come in and actually address the issue that the family needs addressed. Attempted suicides and of course overdoses in 2021, a lot of that is also contributed to opioids and COVID and the resurgence of everybody using and reusing those to, to cope with what was going on.
I think that one, one of the things I, I look at too is I was going through these slides that, that we did the presentation a number of years ago and those crisis intervention calls, we were at about 100. I think that was in 2016. And so we've seen a marked increase in overdoses and crisis intervention calls. And I think some of that is because of the quality work that your officers are doing out there. They, they've embraced de-escalation, they've embraced the mental health process. The addition of the crisis counselors has enabled us to respond and, and actually try to, to navigate that system. Anybody tries to navigate the, the mental health system, it's, it's a jungle. And so I think some of that is because we have taken those extra steps to improve the quality of life of those, some of our citizens that are having crisis or having overdoses. But again, it's, it's a real challenge.
Chief Yanero, how is the social worker currently strategically working with the police department with mental health crisis? Because we have a social worker in the police department, is that correct?
That's correct. And their caseload is...
How many do we currently have?
So we have, we have three sort of...
Full-time?
Full-time. We have one that works in schools and her primary focus is substance abuse in the schools. And so she spends most of her time with, in, in the school system. The other two respond to emergencies and the last, the last caseload for Dr. Gilbert was about 1,000 people. Now, I understand he can't, that she can't effectively manage 1,000 people, but she's, she's moving them into the mental health system from encounters that we have. The social worker, they also participate with, with Onslow Community Outreach. When we find somebody that's homeless, we try to work with them to engage them to see if we can get them into services as well. And so they're pulling a full caseload and, and a lot of times, it really has, it really has made my life and I think the officer's lives a lot easier because those cases where they have to go in and, and try to, try to navigate that system, both the, both of the crisis counselors, Dr. Gilbert and Dave, know that system and they're able to navigate it much better than a police officer. They have more time to do that versus what the officers are doing. And then, and so we've seen some successes in them being able to get folks into the right kind of treatment. I know that, that, that we've spent some funding from, in cooperation with the, with the ministries, excuse me, the outreach, sorry about that, with the outreach to get folks home so that they can, they can have their families help take care of them. Because people end up here homeless, they have no families, they have no connection, they have no resources. So we try to get them home sometimes if that's, if that's something that they want. And so the partnership with the, with the outreach has been very effective in us being able to do that. But again, when you look at those calls, we have two and three. Heather does help with, with doing, doing some things, but her primary focus is that adolescent population, which is a great need in our community for mental health and substance
So in 2021, just to give you an idea, the average response time for priority one, which is our emergency call, is for a police officer, from the time the dispatcher takes the call, 911 call, to the officer arriving on scene is three minutes and 22 seconds, which is a very good response time for within the city and navigating traffic and especially if you have to go down Western Boulevard during rush hour trying to do an emergency call. For 2022, currently, our average is three minutes and 43 seconds. So this number is also increasing. Some of that has to do with the new officers and navigating the city and training and, and those types of issues, but this is a trend that we want to make sure that we don't see continuing.
I might say that that's if the officers are writing a ticket, it's somebody's lucky day because they're going to leave that ticket and go to whatever that emergency is. And so while... is. And so while we've been able to maintain that three, which is great, part of the challenge that we have is that other calls are on the back burner. So if there's, whatever it might be, it may take us some time to get there, a larceny or some other type of call. So while we're, we're sacrificing one for another, it, it does, it does make our citizens wait for, for services when they call us. And that's something we want to improve.
So these are some of the issues that we're, that have led to a lot of that increase in, in time on calls for service. And obviously, when we have to send two officers trying to do that timely response. So leaving calls that are not priority or being redirected on their way to a call that's not priority to another call. And then opioid crisis impacts have increased. And then, of course, providing quality service to our citizens, that requires an effective investigation from the beginning. We don't want to put the wrong people in jail. We don't want to find the wrong people, write the wrong people tickets. We want whoever committed the crime to be the one that is addressed. And whether that's through a law enforcement assisted diversion program or providing pre-trial services to them, whatever fits the need of that situation and does the most good is what we're looking for. Not just, we don't want to get to a point where we're just arresting to deal with it and get it back on the street. That is not effective. That has never been effective. A zero tolerance policy has never been something that is good for any community. It's about finding what the root cause is, addressing the root cause so that crime can stop before it's an issue. And this is one of the, the things that causes us to have most time on calls for service is that critical decision-making model. This is what our officers are trained in, in reassessing events as they occur and unfold, taking the information in, addressing the situation, what the environment is, what's going on. Sometimes this happens in a split second. But sometimes when we can slow things down and use this critical decision-making model, that is the best goal for everybody involved. And the ultimate for this is maintaining the ethics and values that you expect of your officers and preserving the sanctity of life. And that is all life. Everyone goes home at the end of the day. To give you an idea of how effective this has been, this is the decline of our use of force over the last 12 years, or 10 years, excuse me, my apologies. In 2012, you see two numbers. One is the types of force used. You might have one call that two types of force are used because there's two people, or the first encounter wasn't effective and they had to transition to a different type of force. So, but you can see that those, the critical decision-making model has had a tremendous impact in the number of use of force encounters that the Jacksonville Police Department has seen over the years.
And I understand this takes time. And this is not a, I mean, 40 years ago, we used to, I mean, the idea, the, the impetus was get that person rested and get it back on the street. And that had, that philosophy has changed. And the philosophy is to slow down the situation. Because it gives us more options, a lot more options, rather than simply having to use force. And I think employing that model has been very effective for us to, to reduce use of force. Now, will we ever get to zero? I hope so. But, but that's, that's a tremendous drop that we've done over the last several years.
And some of that-
Thank you very much.
Make sure the officers receive that as well.
Yes, we are so happy.
Some of our community engagement programs that we do, that we like to get officers out so that people can engage with them, which, by the way, the first one, Coffee with a Cop, we have one Monday at Panera Bread from 8:00 to 10:00. If you have questions, you want to sit down and talk with a police officer, come have a cup of coffee. And we, we can engage in-
In conversation.
But these are some of the programs that you're all aware of, that we participate in, our Special Olympics, the different things that we do with them. Sadly, we just did a softball tournament with the Sheriff's Office.
We won't talk about that.
We will be ready next year. Some of the essential and mandatory training that our officers have to go through. And for good reason, obviously, less lethal decision-making, use of the simulator, those critical choices in the heat of the moment. Obviously, split-second decisions have to happen. Sometimes you can't de-escalate a situation. That's the reality of life. But in those cases where we can and we can slow down and we can back up and we can reassess what's going on and use the least force possible, that is what we want to do. And that training takes time. And that repetition takes time. That repetitive behavior is what you want. So that when they're on the street, that's what comes natural.
Our goal for, is for crisis intervention, some de-escalation training, fair and impartial policing, radar, SFST, to try to do that within the first year, that's the long-term goal. And so sometimes it takes us more than a year. But our goal is to get officers trained as quickly as we can. Because of the, the volume of officers, we've been able to do, like the crisis intervention training and fair and impartial policing, after they finish the academy, in the time the state has to evaluate their training, it takes about two weeks. So we've been able to mitigate that by, by doing that training in that two-week period that they're waiting for. But when we were just hiring two or three officers, we have to wait till we have enough for a class in order to do that, some of that types of training.
So the idea is for us to be able to be proactive in what we're doing. Reality is 10% of crimes committed by 55% of the offenders, the same people are committing most of the crime. And that's the, the reality of life. Additionally, you have revictimization. People that are victim once tend to be revictimized once they get into that, that, that cycle. And then 60% of the crime happens in the same areas.
When an officer comes on duty, they're able to look at their MDT. And they're actually able to see where the calls occurred from the previous call. And part of their responsibility is to look at the calls from the previous week and then target those areas where there's been crime. And that's been effective for us over the last several years. And, and really though, it takes pro, being proactive in order to do that. And so when we, when we go out and we, we're looking, when we talk about proactive policing, it is that ability to, to target those areas. But it's also that ability to be free enough where they can actually engage with the community.
So some of those programs that we do are DDEX, which is Data Driven Approaches to Crime and Traffic Safety. It's looking at where's the crime occurring, where the crash is occurring, doing selective enforcement in those areas to try to address the underlying causes of those crimes. As Chief was referencing, when the officers get on shift, they look at their zone, they look at where the crime's been occurring in their zone. And that's where they do their targeted enforcement actions, which is part of the intelligence-led policing process. LEADS is our law enforcement assisted diversion program. It's part of our opioid response. That is, if someone is, officer gets out with someone and they're in a possession of a user amount and they don't have a violent history, then we ask if they're, want to be part of the LEAD program. And if they successfully treat or go through the substance treatment and successfully complete all the wickets of that, then they never get charged with what they were caught in possession with and the evidence gets destroyed.
The overdose response team, Dr. Washington, you were asking about the crisis counselors. So we have an overdose. Part of their responsibility is to go out and talk to that person the next day. Try to make sure, see if we can get them into services, see if we can get them into treatment, see if we can, to look whatever they might need, whether it's housing, whether it's Medicare or Medicaid, whatever they, whatever we can do to help them get on a, a different path. We do try to do that after that overdose occurs. And then, then, then with Heather, in, in the school system, she has the opportunity to talk to the children. Because, you know, a child, an adult overdoses, that has an impact on the child. And so, so that connection between the overdose and, and the children is important for us as well.
As Chief referenced earlier, this is the standard International Association of Chiefs of Police, 60% obligated versus 40% unobligated. You see, our unobligated available patrol time is at 21%. So we are at half of what the recommended unobligated time is. The consequences of all that is, as, as the demand increases, as it diversifies, as the requirements become more complex in dealing with mental health and substance abuse issues and still addressing your normal crime patterns, as that continues to climb, the officer's time availability to be proactive, to engage in those community engagement programs, and you actually engage with the community and develop those initiatives to solve that community's problems dwindles. And they just don't have the ability to do so. And we want to keep this going. We received in 2019 ICP's Community Police Award, Chief and now Senator Lozara were key in putting all of that together. And Mr. Lou?
That's Department now.
It was. But our goal is to be reactive, not proactive, or proactive, not reactive. My apology. Reactive is just staying in your cars and answering calls for service. Proactive is actually getting out, like this officer did. They were sawing off a, a young man playing basketball and decided to get out. At first, the young man was a little concerned. And then the officer got out, started playing basketball. I was like, no, just walk away. And mom actually took this picture. And mom was very pleased that an officer engaged with her son in a positive way. I'll let you talk about that.
This is interesting. The Rand Corporation came up with what, what the value is of an officer. If we put an officer for each officer on the street, and I believe that's 300 some thousand dollars, 342,000. So each officer on the street has that value-
442.
Excuse me, 442. My glasses are. But, but the value of the officer on the street. So for every officer that we put on the street, if we can use them to effectively reduce crime, then what we're going to see is we're going to see a return on our investment. And I, I think, you know, there is, there is a relationship between officers, the number of officers that you have, and, and, and your crime rate. You can't do it all. We need the community, obviously, behind us. And, and we have a great community here. But I think, as I said a year or so ago, I think we're at a tipping point that we're going to have to continue, if we're going to continue the level of service that we have now, we're going to have to add additional officers. And, and that, that's, that's why we're here tonight to talk about the COPS grant. Because it's an opportunity to use some federal funds to, to increase the number of officers that we have.
So with council's approval, we applied for the COPS grant. And we received notification October 13th that we were awarded the six officers. And that brings us here this evening. The total package for, it's a three-year grant. So it's 250,000 each year of the grant that we are eligible for. The total salary and benefits for three, for six officers for three years is 1.2 million. The grantor will provide that 750,000 or 59% of the, the funds. And the city would be responsible for the other 40% or 512. And this is just salary and benefits. There would be some of the equipment and recurring costs. We have the ability with what we have available to try to offset those costs as necessary with vehicles, with equipment and uniforms that we already have and those types of things. So the cost of equipment, one-time cost for all six officers would be 321,000. Again, that would be offset a little bit because all vehicles and equipment are three-year purchase. So it would actually be reduced. This would be if you paid the whole amount right up front, it would be 321. So some of that will actually be reduced and spread out over time.
I may add, this is different. In 2010, we had the COPS grant here. And we, we added six officers in 2010. The, the COPS grant at that time would pick six officers. If I was a COPS officer, then they would hire and pay for my salary for the entire time. This grant is a little bit different. What this grant does is, is they pay for three years of funding, but they'll do it for five years, if that makes sense. What they do is, is, is if our total number of officers is 126, and we had cops and there's 132, if we drop below 132, then they don't, they don't, they don't pay for that. So, but if we go back, if we go back up to 132, and they'll, they'll pay for that. So they'll pay for that three, it's, it's a weird way they're doing it. They'll pay for that three years. But if we drop below that authorized strength, then the, the grant goes away. So does our obligation, but the grant goes away. And so they'll give us five years to spend that money. But they say it's for three years. It just-
As long as if you calculate it.
If you hit it three times, possibly.
If you-
With that five years.
If we went down to 130 for six months, then the grant would be for three years and six months. Because, and we, we hired them back and we stayed full staff for that time. So every time we lose an officer, it tacks on money to the end of the grant for up to five years. But it, it's kind of a weird way of doing things.
They essentially pause the drawdown until you're back to full staff. So if you have Officer A that's hired under the grant, you have Officer Z that retires, well, Officer A moves into Officer Z's position, and now the grant drawdown's empty for right now until you hire Officer B. And then you can start redrawing. But that money that wasn't expended during that time is then available in year four or five to, it just doesn't change the amount of the grant.
So at the end of, at the end of three years, what happens?
You have to keep the officers for one year.
For the whole amount, right.
For one year.
For one year.
Well, and I, I, I'll just, kind of weird because we're saying three years, but-
It's very confusing.
It is very confusing because if, if Officer A is at three years and six months we pay, then we have to keep Officer A for a year past that, that day, that, that time. So that would be four years and, and six months. So it's, it's based upon how much, the end of the grant and when, for each one of those six officers.
I'm also confused. What, I should know this number. What is your authorized strength right now, budget-wise? So as far as sworn personnel?
This budget year started with a 128, full-time sworn personnel. And now we've added four SROs. So now we're at 132.
We just added another one tonight.
Those are, those went to the elementary schools. So every, every school, including Thompson Early Childhood, will have an SRO.
What's the beginning entry salary?
It's 44.5.
44.7.
44.7, I'm sorry.
And that, that doesn't cover the full entry salary, that 150.
So you have 24 people training right now, 24 new officers.
Between those that are in VLETE and those that are actually in training?
And we have eight or nine that are, are slow, are, are doing the, the BOEs. And so they'll be out on the street by themselves within the next two weeks. But we have-
Board of exit, that's when they get out of training.
I think we have 16 more in the, in, in this VLETE.
Has the hiring picked up a little bit as far as big applicants?
As far as certified applicants, no. But as far as non-certified applicants that we've sent, we've been very successful in doing that.
We've hired 38 in the last 16 months and put through VLETE.
And they're on the street now?
14 are in the current VLETE.
Okay, that's okay. Could this not account for some of the difference in your response times? Could this not account for some of the difference in your response times?
Yeah, as I said earlier, with that two minutes and 40, or three minutes and 43 seconds that we're at currently, some of that does have to do with the new officers learning the geography and how to navigate and to not drive down Western Boulevard during...
I remember when I was a police officer, a long, 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 long time ago, and I was assigned to trainee, one of the things we used to do was we would take them into Northwoods or somewhere in a large neighborhood and basically turn it over to them, and that's how they learned our navigation. But sometimes we'd stay in the same area or block for a right little while, but I know that being able to orient them to the different neighborhoods is very difficult.
And part of that is we have very young officers training these new officers.
What's the average, what's the average time in service now, you know, as far as officers?
Less than two years, probably.
I think if you go through the entire department, it's less than five years.
Wow, that's young.
With your hiring of these new six officers, what is the selection board process like? Who would actually be a part of that selection board to hire those new officers? Do we currently still have the selection board comprised of active police officers and retired police officers, or has that changed?
We just have active police officers and then folks from HR as well. And so we look at the diversity of the board. You know, it is, it is a challenge. We started, for example, the summer class that we started with, we started with 85 applicants, and we're only able to hire 12. We would have hired more if we could have, but some of the challenges that we looked at was the tape test, which is a test that's based on the 10th grade reading level. And then the physical part, there's a number of push-ups they have to do. They have to do like 20 push-ups, roll with a 100-pound bag, and 20 push-ups again. And that, and then run and jump over a fence and do some physical agility stuff. And that's a state requirement, so it limited the amount of applicants that we could get. And so that's something we can't control. And so we ran them through that, 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 that physical agility test, and we really only ended up with 12 candidates. And I'm not going to comment on the state or anything else, but I think we did lose some good candidates because of the, that portion of the test.
And some of those that may fail the POPE or the physical agility piece, if they are close to it, we kind of stay in contact with them and kind of work them through. And if we have a PT instructor available, we try to help get them on a plan so that we can potentially get them in the next class.
That's a great idea.
What is the diversity of our police force looking like these days?
Well, actually, if you'd asked me yesterday, or tomorrow, I'd probably tell you. Just have to go in and do our accreditation for this year. Last year, we were, we were fairly, we were fairly good. I think we were about 14% minority, around 30% female.
We're actually above the national average on female. We're at 20% female.
But I'll send it, because I have to do it, I'm doing it tomorrow anyway, so I'll be glad to send that to you.
I guess my next question would be to Mr. Ray or somebody, is what kind of impact will this have on our budget? I mean, is there funding available for this?
Mayor, I tell you, as of right now, if we look at, for the numbers that Deputy Chief Weaver's presented here, and this is the screen that's fantastic for next year, if you're trying to allocate $729,985 for next year, and again, remember that's how she said, there's some numbers that would come out of there, the easy answer at this point, prior to us looking at our budget plan for FY23, is you're going to dip into page 78 of your fund balance, right? You're going to look at, for general fund, you're going to have to be a fund balance appropriation. Once we're able to pull together our revenues and our projections for next year, then you'll be able to see what trade-offs you would have to happen, just like we're talking about with other personnel or for the benefits package. So I think that's our challenge now, is what do we weigh as priorities? And that's, goes back to what the Council's going to be doing, saying those initiatives for next year, what are the highest priorities that we're going to have to look for? So basic answer, Mayor, without going deeper into Sabrina's team, is fund balance at this point, and then revenue projections for next year.
And it's important to remember that this is the total cost, so $250,000 would actually be of the...
Stop recurring, you say? If there's another slide?
The only recurring is the 25, and then part of the salary. So this is the salary portion only, so taking the equipment and that recurring cost out, this would be the impact salary-wise each year.
Bullets and, you know, uniforms, things like that, is that $25,000?
Any other questions? Or do you have any more slides?
We've already talked about the grant requirements. We slipped that in earlier, but the only piece that we didn't talk about was, we only have 45 days from award, so we were awarded on the 13th of October. We have to accept by the 27th of November, or the grant goes away. I think that was everything else we discussed.
Okay.
The beautiful slide that was missing was the crime rate numbers laid over the use of force numbers. To recognize that those are happening during the same 10 years is pretty incredible.
Our officers have done a tremendous job with the time that they have available.
All right, Council, I believe there was some direction as far as whether or not to accept the grant.
I'd make a motion that we accept the grant and realize that there's a cost to this, but our cost is also based on what we place in terms of priority of public service, and we place a high priority on public safety. So we're going to have to, next year and the year after, scrutinize each and every budget like we normally do, but perhaps even more so to make sure that we can pay and continue to pay for the increased public safety service we're providing.
Seconded.
Any discussion? I'll start. One question here. You mentioned in your earlier slide presentation about your criminal intelligence unit. Is that something that you look at, that you may reinstitute since it was so successful?
Absolutely.
We hope to, we hope to get those specialized units back up to speed in the next year or so. The challenge that we'll have is the officer's experience and what training they're going to have to have.
Sounds like you've got a lot of, a lot of work ahead of you as far as getting folks prepped and ready.
Yeah, we do.
What's your, what's your current vacancy?
So we have three SROs, the three SRO vacancies, and then one officer vacancy.
This, could we use this for the SROs or no?
No, because that's commingling.
That's totally different, okay? So say that again, what are you down?
We're down three SROs and one officer.
Just one, just one officer, okay.
So we have four vacancies?
Yes. If you know anybody that's interested, please make a comment.
Any other discussion? We're going to take a vote. All those who favor 65% and 80%?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we're going to go to item number 11 on the agenda for this evening, and this is FY23 first quarter financial report. Mr. Ray?
Thanks, Mayor. So when we had our council vision, vision retreat, we talked about quarterly reports. We wanted to look at quarterly reports for finance and for HR, a couple of different tracking mechanisms that we want. This section here, we sent this information out to Council, I believe last week or the end of the previous week. We wanted you to see the numbers that we're talking about. So you'll see, you have it in your packet, and you also have a hard copy, Mayor. We've presented you with a layout of the first quarter of FY23, which ends, ended September 30th. What we're showing you is a breakdown from each fund. We'll show you the FY22 year-to-date and the FY23 year-to-date. We also give you the FY23 budget, and then we show you the percent of the budget that's been achieved. The reason we present it to Council tonight is to get that feedback for what we want to see when we come around to the second quarter report, and that's going to be for both of these. You'll notice on, for the financial report, there's a challenge because the revenues aren't, your major revenue streams aren't received during the first quarter. Some will be a challenge during the second quarter. The ad valorem tax you'll see heavily come through around January, then the sales tax, you're going to see that come in quarters, so you're going to see that, those dollars come out. So when you're looking at those main revenue streams in this report, you're going to see red-colored numbers, and you're going to say, hey, that's a challenge, our revenues aren't where they need to be. That's why that healthy fund balance comes into play, because since we have the fund balance, we're able to manage the first part of the year and our expenditures to get to that point. So you'll see that report here, Mayor, and we just wanted to present it to Council to ask if there's a format. Mr. Bittner had stated before, we want to see the anomalies, and that'll be easier on that second quarter, as I said. First quarter, it's hard to present any type of anomaly because we don't want to show you revenue concerns. Expenditure concerns are pretty simple because we can monitor those for what we see from previous years. And remember, typically, we front-load a lot of our major expenses at the first part of the year, and so you'll see that on the expenses as well. So you may see a heavy first quarter, but then in the second quarter, you're going to see those numbers balance out. And that's, you're going to see that every single year, just the way we pay some of our items. You'll see them footnoted in terms of bonds and contract and contract services.
Any questions, or Mr. Ray?
I have a question, Mr. Ray. So with the compensation packet that we just approved, is that something that's going to be spread out over the four quarters, or is that something that is just going to be front-loaded upfront for us to take a look at?
Mayor, you'll see that throughout the entire budget. So it'll be just like your regular salary line items. You'll see it every pay period, it'll be realized, and then the benefits realized in the same format. Yes, Mayor?
I'll just make a comment, if that's all right. Appreciate getting the numbers quarterly versus, you know, once a year in a while is very helpful, but I also appreciate the commentary, the notes about the insurance and bonds and contracts helped make sense of this one really, so appreciate the effort the staff put in to make it clear and give us something we can work with.
Mayor, I have one thing, one of the things you'll see as we get into the next, and one of the things you'll see during our budget prep is, we'll have that forecasting. So you don't get a lot of forecasting during the first, during a year, but you're going to get it as we're doing our budget preparation. And that's a value add because we want you to see the forecast for revenue streams and expenditures, much like what Deputy Chief Weaver just pointed out, and the expenses from each department as it ebbs and flows, and some of your questions on staffing, we're going to be able to show you some of those things. So Sabrina's team's working on, on the charts and the forecasts to help us as we model that budget preparation process. The beautiful part is, since we're dealing with metrics, you take away a lot of the guesswork. And that's what we want to present to Council, so that when you're making these policy decisions, just like you made, and you're adding in an area, you're going to see that direct economic impact, and then your next decision has to determine, as you said, Mayor, where you're moving those things, as Mr. Bittner alluded to. Then you have to move different modules around to satisfy those initiatives that the Council's going to have. So we're going to, for second quarter, we will present that information to you with some of the trends, so you can follow, kind of how Council Edwards pointed out, two things are directly connected, and we'll show you those trend lines, so how they're married together to show that impact.
I've got a couple of comments that don't really pertain to the report, but just, just reading the comprehensive report, the auditor made a comment that our investments are not meeting industry standard, if you will. And it's actually below the T-bill return. And I guess my question is, why, and what are we, what are we planning on doing about?
Mayor, first, I can't tell you the exact answer on why those investments are lower, but I will tell you that our internal discussion is, we need to make sure that we're reviewing our investments often, right? We need to have a team that pulls that together. You have to have the experts to show you what the markets are. As most of have seen over the last two years, the markets are, for lack of a better term, crap. And, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't be at the same model, just like for the T-bill. We should be able to maintain a certain minimum level of return on investment throughout the year, and that's why we invest in safer markets for that reason, so we don't have that volatility. So I'll tell you, the general response is, after looking at the last two quarters, we need to regroup and determine what our investment strategy is, because there's, there's never a time when we want to leave meat on the bone, and especially when we have dollars that we can invest. There's times in Jacksonville's history, we haven't had those dollars. So to be able to invest wisely to get the highest ROI is, that's our challenge.
And I'm thinking here's a T-bill that's the safest investment, yet we're not even meeting T-bill returns, so it raised a red flag with me.
You're constrained also by the, by the state in terms of your investments?
We'll have, all of our investments are monitored through, as Mr. Massie said, LGC. So we have limitations that don't give...
They're being monitored, protected.
Yeah, we have...
It's at a point of, you can't get involved in certain high investment returns.
Different markets are not allowed, but we wouldn't do it because even on the high yield, potential for high yield, they're volatile. And so we, typically, you're going to see across all municipalities, low risk, moderate reward, so that we maintain a standardized return of investment. But like you point out now...
We're not even, we're not even, we're not even meeting minimums, so. The other question I had is, I know we had, we set up a fund, it's called a Major Fund for Emergency Relief, but I've just got a question about it. I see where it's got a balance of $2.08 million. I thought that was reimbursement from FEMA and insurance for various things. I wonder why we have a positive or fund balance?
Mayor, I'm going to have to ask Sabrina on that one, because I have, don't have the knowledge. I will pull her chair out, though.
I'm sure she appreciates.
I have not looked at the emergency fund in a while. It's a emergency statement, so I do apologize. So we have, we are still waiting on money from FEMA. Quite a bit of money. We have a receivable booked for $1.9 million.
We're waiting on money. The $2.08 million, we have a, we have a fund balance, positive fund balance, $2.08 million? Isn't that reimbursement? Why, why wouldn't that been dispersed to whatever, whatever line items that we pulled from or funds we pulled from for reimbursement?
I don't, I don't think we've pulled from anywhere other than, these are just the projects that were FEMA-related, so the reimbursements came from FEMA. And so when we...
So what happens to the money sitting there? What?
We still have some projects open, and so I think the money is to be spent for those projects.
Okay.
We still have Shoreline Drive project, and we still have a Hurricane Florence project open, and Slight Tropical Storm Isaias as well.
I'm still confused, but...
I can check into exactly what projects.
Okay, yeah, I don't necessarily need an answer. I didn't know if you'd do it off the top of your head, but, you know, certainly a follow-up is certainly fine.
I do know we have some projects open, but I just don't know exactly.
I'm just curious, you know, why we have a fund balance.
You don't hear that from a council member often, Mayor, that's it. We try and keep those fund balances. But we'll get a report, Mayor, because it makes sense that we, we expend all the dollars when we receive them, especially if they're reimbursable. So we'll get you the report on the projects that we have, the dollars that are going out, and maybe we have some of those, as Sabrina said, if we have some expenses that are out there. We'll get you a full report on it. And even if, Mayor, if we don't have the, if you don't have any updates on this one, as you, as you look at the quarterly reports and as you come around and you want to make comments, feel free to send those, and we'll incorporate them in next month, because like we talked about at our retreat, the goal is to get to a document that is, that provides the information that Council needs to see and keeps you updated, so that you're not always... you're not always just carrying around an audit book and you're looking at June 30th numbers. We want to give you the most up-to-date and accurate numbers that we can give you. So if you see something, send it to us, just like that question in terms of the audit. Great question. We'll, we'll have to get the information back, but we'll, we'll bring it to you in that format.
Just, just a comment, since, since our, since the, the audit showed that we are, are not meeting goals and investments, I think that, I would like to see that included in quarterly, just so that I feel good that staff is following up and, and trying to improve our investment returns and, and at least get close enough to whatever the T-bill rates are, so.
We'll add that to it. It's a good adder there. For the HR report, Mayor, you good for that?
Good.
Okay, so the same kind of concept here. The reason we clarified in the, in the header, because we're sending these out at the same time, because we want you to look at your quarterly financial, and then we want you to have your quarterly HR report. The way we track them is, you're seeing the fiscal year in terms of the finances, you're seeing the calendar year in terms of our HR report. So just clarify that. You have a first quarter report for finance, you have a third quarter report for HR, because that's our personnel, and that's how we're tracking it, and that's how we're delivering that information to you. Same kind of concept here. We want to present information to you that shows the impact. So similar to where the question Dr. Washington's asking, when council takes an action, we want you to be able to see how that action is affected throughout the organization as a whole. So what you'll see here is, you're getting the comparison for our third quarter of attrition through our HR, and you're not going to see a direct impact right now on what happens with the plus or minus $2.6 million allocated by the council. What we need to see is over this quarter, the next quarter, and I would say over the next year, we need to see how that impact's happening. These numbers are fantastic for the point of, HR's provided us with, you'll see calendar year 17 all the way up to 22. You'll be able to see some, some numbers that are moving. And then you have to clarify that some of the numbers will include times of year when we have, we have short-term or temp hires. We think about summer help hires. Those people come in, and then those people go out. So those are numbers that you're going to see in attrition. So when you're looking at a third quarter, this is typically when you're going to see those numbers occurring. I think here, you're looking at 56, and you'd say, well, last year, we had the same thing. Well, for the third quarter every year, since we bring those in-house, we're going to have that issue. Think back to the time when some of those parks and recreation hires during the summer, we didn't bring those in-house. Those would have been contracted employees. You wouldn't see those numbers definitely impacting how we're handling things, because those are seasonal hires, temporary, short-term hires, as I would categorize them. Here, you're looking at that third quarter, and you're comparing year to, quarter to quarter, year to year, which is, which is a valuable way to look at it. Our goal is to see how the things that we're doing is impacting our ability to maintain staffing levels. One of the comments that the Police Department just made was, average years of experience from the force, top to bottom, between two and five years. And that's, that's a challenge. So if we're trying to have people that are doing upper-level type of investigative operations, I'm not sure if you can have a two-year person to handle such investigations. I believe that to be a challenge. Chief may say, you know, we can handle it. But think about the numbers, and if you put, you put Chief Yonero at a 40-year veteran, that means that all those years of experience are bringing our number up to two to five? That's crazy. So, so we have to figure out what our ability is to affect change within the organization. The best part is, Mayor, the council has been talking about this for at least a solid year and doing some things that are, and you did some other things today that make an impact. But we want to present these numbers to you throughout the year, so that you're monitoring those impacts as, as they're occurring. And quarter by quarter, you'll see what it is. If you go to that second page of the HR report, you're going to see, you're going to see the calendar year 22, calendar year 21. We're putting this information out because we're utilizing exit interviews as a tool for why people leave our organization. So these are simple charts right now, and these are going to start trend lines. This shows you calendar year 22, 30% leave for better pay benefits advancement. If you go down to calendar year 21, right below that in the chart, you're going to see previously, our number right now would say 46%. So the easy way to look at the metric is, something happened, therefore, we're doing better. That's because you're only looking at, at a short history, and we can go back to 20 and see it. We need to build trend lines over a long period of time, so that we can directly attribute cause and effect. And that's the purpose for providing the report in the manner that, that we've reported it to. If you go to that back page, Mayor, if you go to the back page, you'll see calendar year 20. And this is where I say, if you only compare two years, you don't get a good understanding of what's going on, because if you look at calendar year 20, you're going to see 26%. And so then, you have to decide, did we, did we get worse, then we got a little better, or what's going on? So we have to do deeper dives into our ability to retain qualified staff within the organization. So this is our, this is our presentation. That last chart that we included, it'll show you six years' worth of the new hires. Again, this quarter, you're going to consistently see new hires, and then for the difference between 20 and 21, you're going to see us bringing some of those hires in-house. So as we, as we get to next year, then we'll, we'll streamline three years' worth of data that we can look at a little deeper throughout the process. So what we want to see is a, a direct impact on every action that we take at a policy level for council. We can show you a return of investment. That's our challenge, and hopefully that's in recruitment, hopefully that's in retention. Whereas, some departments may struggle to get candidates, we want to attract those candidates. Some departments may struggle to retain those candidates. We want to be able to figure out what the retention issues are, and I think that's been brought up by the council the last six months very well. And so that's why we want to get these reports to you. This is a harder one, Mayor, for how we present the information back to council. So you're really going to have to give us the feedback of, of what you want to see, maybe some of the patterns from departmental patterns, some of the information that Deputy Chief Weaver pointed out. You know, those are good, showing you the, the staffing levels and how we're getting to different operations, and how that's going to impact their effectiveness as a department. Maybe you decide you want to see some of those department areas as particulars. And so we can present that specifically, so you can focus on something, instead of just overall. So we're trying to figure out what that delivery method is.
One thing for me that was helpful was the total attrition with the temp attrition noted, so that you could do the math and see the difference, because that helps you eliminate in your count, you know, in your thinking, you can eliminate the seasonal employees from the attrition rate and sequence left. When you do that, you see 36, 39, 32, 36, 35. Those are numbers that you can, you know, those are non-seasonal employees that came away. So that gives you better, so I like seeing that separated.
Or you can do a comparison and contrasting, where you're just looking at your full-time workers and extrapolating your seasonal employees. But even with that, the seasonal employees will be a good record, because if you're thinking about now hiring seasonal employees as full-time employees, at least you have some data to be able to support the reasons that these individuals would now want to transition into the city, as opposed to being recruited and going someplace, because it will be interesting with your seasonal employees, is that because they are leaving because their particular period has expired with the city, or are they leaving forehead because of the simple fact that they've been offered another position somewhere else? So that's something that this does not tell us, but if you further aggregate the data, the reasons why your part-time seasonal employees are leaving, are they really leaving because there's something better, or are they leaving because their term just expired with the city, and they're just waiting for the next year to roll around to be hired again? So that's another way of looking at the data as well.
And we have those data points. One of the things, HR presented all that. I, I pulled that information out, they do have that data. The cool thing you'll see is, when the city decided to bring those positions in-house instead of leaving them externally, is, we were able to cut down on people leaving mid-season to go somewhere else. By bringing them in-house, we provided extra benefits that gave them that, that term. Instead of working through a temp agency, we gave them a full term for a season. And you'll see that on some of the exit interviews, so we'll provide that information to you as well. Good point.
One of the things that I had asked the previous city manager in human resources to do, that if we were to take a proactive stance, and it's very easy to look at the reasons why people are leaving, but I think just it's important to look at the reason why people are staying. And if you can accentuate on the reasons why an individual would want to come to work every day, other than just collecting a paycheck, what is the raison d'etre? What is the reason, the zeal, that I'm coming to work every day? And accentuate on those rationales, then maybe we can also turn the tide, so that we don't have a revolving door of our workers sweeping us.
That's our strategy that James uses in recruitment, so, good point. But we can also present that to council with that controlling the narrative to show, there's a lot of people that are staying, so we can present it in that manner as well.
Just as an anecdotal, during the chamber forums for the city council positions, I made a comment that, that, that as far as I knew, the only place that we had a hiring problem was in the Police Department. Well, I was, was told that was incorrect, and of course, didn't know. So I guess what I would like to know is if there's, if there is an issue that comes up, you know, rather than looking at trends, I'd like to know about an issue, too. Is there a department that's, that's going through some issues that, that, that we're losing employees and/or having trouble hiring? I'd like to know about that beforehand, so that I don't embarrass myself again. And I, you know, I, I think that's staff's, staff's responsibility to keep city council informed.
We will draw that. You know, one example would be, as we, you know, we have a lot of projects, as we're talking about, as Sabrina was talking about, and to have that qualified staff, one challenge that we've had historically is in engineering. And, and so to attract qualified engineers into our community, there's a challenge, whether it's pay, whether it's region, whether it's the talent, who they're, where they're at. So that would be a great area to be able to point that out. I couldn't tell you PD, because now we just heard that we're, you just approved three, or we'd only be one down. So we were doing really good until you did that action. But other departments do have those challenges. So we're able to pinpoint the recruitment challenges that we're seeing, and we're able to pinpoint those departments that are having great success in, in recruitment. And so I think that's exciting. One recruitment success that I would say is if, if you don't mind, Mayor, if Sabrina would like to introduce her new team member who happens to be sitting here.
So this is Shalante Williams. She is our new assistant, or deputy finance director. She just started with us this week, and she comes from Mayesville, where she's been the finance officer there for the last six years.
Six years.
So we're very excited.
So we, we successfully recruited talent with experience. And I think that's a, that's a beautiful thing for what we're doing, because a lot of times, we say, we just need to fill it. And Sabrina was, was very specific. There are things that I need. And so the process was, was excellent in terms of recruiting, and very detailed. And, and when Sabrina came in as a director and said, this is the person I want to add to our team, that's the end of discussion. And I think that's some of the success stories that we find, because to manage our systems over and over, it takes qualified people, and so those are good success stories. Same thing with this one, Mayor. As you see things, as we send out reports, give us comments on what you need and what you want us to provide, and we'll make these updates for the next one, so you'll see those coming through.
Yep, one table.
We do, Mayor. We had a lot going on these last couple of weeks, which has been amazing. This is the Freedom Fountain Observance. Obviously, you see here pouring water into the Freedom Fountain. A great process for the community to gather together. We had a good turnout, had a great weather day, which makes for a good turnout. Very exciting, because now this is all part of our veterans' celebration and appreciation, which is an awesome event. For, for lack of anything better, you see city, county, and state all together right there in one little quadrant. So I say kudos to our team for being able to put this on, and for all the participation that we had during that day. And, and being earlier in the day, we were able to have different groups be present for the event. Couple, couple speakers that seemed to show up at multiple places over and over again. This goes to the Veterans Day Parade. Another awesome event as part of our week of appreciation and celebration, to have men and women serving our country, participating, and then for our veterans to be able to, to go out, and multiple people in the community just coming out and having that awesome civic pride. Tonight, we could not be out to celebrate our high school Jacksonville soccer team, because we were here, but this is civic pride as well. So as they're, as they're competing in areas, it's good to have our people celebrating and enjoying the events that we have in the community. This goes down to our Red, White &amp; Salute event that happened at Jacksonville Commons. An awesome event. You can see the fire department, the Marines, we had so many different trucks. We had a trash truck over there, we had, I can't tell you what all the Marine vehicles were there. I wanted to say a good, educated name, Mayor, but I've got nothing. But I can tell you the fire truck was there, and all these were a great event. Susan was there all day at this event, and she was organizing multiple actions. You can see that right there is instantaneous success. There was a gentleman who was operating the weather equipment, and as it started to rain, he informed us that he knew it was going to rain. It was a little late, but we expect that from meteorologists. But it was great to have, to have our people out and about. Again, that's all it takes, Mayor. That's a, that's our city right here, and it's a massive, expensive tire that that child's standing next to. Before we got to that, we also had axe-throwing and rock climbing at the event. So if you weren't able to go to the facility and throw an axe, I challenge you to find this truck. It was fantastic. It took us a while to be able to set this up, because some people at the table thought there might be a liability, but it was a beautiful event and a huge success. So then come to the evening, and we had our laser light show at the backside of the Commons. The way that laser light shows work is, you put fog machines all over, and the lasers go through the fog machine, and they had music, they had plenty of lights, and a great introduction that was veteran-based to appreciate all of our men and women that have served our country and that currently serve. So you can just see it, this is not graphics that we completed in-house, this is real life, for those of us that were able to see this. This was beautiful. And this was partnership with TDA, so a great job for being able to make that happen. My last comment, Mayor, is you, you met one of our newest employees, and as of Saturday, Mr. Ron Massey has celebrated 15 years with our city. So... And instead of going out and celebrating that, Mayor, by going to the pow-wow of the parade, he was hanging out with you at a community meeting.
We had a blast.
I thought that was, I thought that was fantastic. It's great to have, it's great to have quality people to work with. And again, that's, that's our city, that's my city, and that's, that's our, that's our team right there is, is Mr. Massey. And it's a value to have great people to work with to make these awesome things happen each and every day.
Great work. Entertaining motion to adjourn. Fill moves. All in favor, signify, say aye. All opposed.